Thompson.
Yes, here.
Grenant.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Jerome is absent. Melton.
Here.
Pauls.
Here.
Mr. President.
Please stand by the invocation and the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands by its own right and individual for liberty and justice for all.
So this has been our last meeting before Veterans Day. Just want to take a minute to thank all the veterans in our community for their service. And all of us will be out next week going to ceremonies in their honor. We look forward to doing that. Thank you.
Daily Record, the official newspaper of the city of Omaha, on November 1, 2013, noted Ray Pre-Council in regular city council meetings, November 5, 2013. A current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chamber.
So good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device. And I do have just a couple of notes I want to make before we hear from Councilman Thompson. One note is Ron Turner was visiting the city council today. I think he'll be in the chambers shortly. He's a high school student from Burke High School and also a member of the mayor's youth advisory commission. There he is in the back. We appreciate him being here and participating with the city council today and his interest in local government. Also, I want to recognize two longtime employees that will soon be leaving the service of the city but that we've appreciated very much in our office and in the city clerk's office. Tammy Beidrowski, the secretary to the city council, has announced her retirement after 32 years of service to the city council and to the citizens of Omaha. And Cindy Tennis of the city clerk's office, I understand, is 40 years of service to the city and the citizens of Omaha. So very much appreciate all they've done for us and wish them well in their retirements. Okay.
Proclamation. Item five, proclamation for a 100th anniversary of the founding of the University of Nebraska at Omaha Alumni Association.
Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. If Mr. Denker and Ms. Kennedy could come forth, please. Could you identify yourself and the organization you represent?
Hi, I'm Mary Kennedy. I am the staff associate with the UNO Alumni Association.
I'm Lee Denker and president of the University of Nebraska at Omaha Alumni Association.
We understand that this is your 100th year anniversary. Is that correct?
That is correct.
We would like to read a proclamation to you if you would let us.
We'll let you.
All right. Whereas the founders of the University of Omaha initiated and signed articles of incorporation on October 8, 1908, to establish a university for the promotion of sound learning and education. And whereas 26 students came together on September 14 in that year at the Reddick Mansion, which was located at 24th and Pratt Street, to begin their collegiate studies, and 13 of them formed the Alumni Association upon graduation in 1913. And whereas since its founding, the University of Nebraska at Omaha Alumni Association has been strengthening UNO's worldwide alumni network for the last 100 years. It is one of Omaha's longest-serving charitable organizations and the first dedicated exclusively to events advancing UNO. And whereas the UNO Alumni Association helps the city of Omaha by providing a highly educated workforce with nearly 100,000 active UNO alumni members and over 4,200 members residing right here in the Omaha metro area, more than any other university. And since 1953, the UNO Alumni Association has provided scholarship support to more than 500 deserving students, allowing Omaha students to remain in town to advance their education. And whereas the UNI Alumni Association has provided the community with a premier meeting and events venue in the heart of town at the Thompson Alumni Center. More than 1 million visitors have attended events or meetings at the Thompson Alumni Center since it opened in 1979. And whereas most notably, the UNO Alumni Association has brought international recognition to Omaha with their programs, events, and communications by receiving 16 institutional awards from the Council of Advancement and Support of Education, the Professional Education for Advancement Professionals. That includes the university's first-ever Silver Award in Cases International Circle of Excellence Awards Program. Now, we, therefore, the city council of the city of Omaha, do hereby recognize the 100th anniversary of the founding of the University of Nebraska at Omaha Alumni Association. In witness hero, we have set our hand and caused the official seal of the city of Omaha to be affixed on this fifth day of November 2013. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Another 100 years. There's two.
Madam Clerk.
Zoning ordinances on final reading and planning board attachments. Mr. President will take item, agenda items six through nine together. They're all one case. Item six is an ordinance for rezoned property located at 4502 South 60th Street from DR Development Reserve District to R6 Low Density Multiple Family Residential District. A is planning board and planning department recommend approval. Item seven is an ordinance to approve the PUD Planned Unit Development Overlay District for the same property. A is planning board and planning department recommend approval. Item eight is a resolution to approve the plat entitled Kidder Heights located at 4502 South 60th Street. It's over from 10/22/13 for publication in public hearing. It had publication. A is planning board and planning department recommend approval. Item nine is a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement with the Kidder Family Revocable Trust for Kidder Heights Slot 1 located at 4502 South 60th Street. It's over from 10/22/13.
Public hearings on items number six through nine are today. Proponents, please.
Rob Woodling, Foundations Development, 1886 South 126th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Be more than happy to answer any questions you may have. I'm the developer on the project.
Thank you, Mr. Woodling. Any other proponents that want to speak today? See none, any opponents?
Motion to approve.
Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The documents are approved, seven, or six to zero. We'll take items 10 through 13 together. They're all one case. Item 10 is an ordinance for rezoned property located northwest of 168th Street and West Dodge Road from AG Agricultural District and MH Mobile Home Residential District to MU Mixed Use District, portions of which property lie within the flood fringe. A, planning board and planning department recommend approval. Item 11 is an ordinance to approve a mixed-use district development agreement located northwest of 168th Street and West Dodge Road between the city and Triberto LLC. 12 is the resolution approving the plat entitled West Dodge Point, formerly known as Tribeto, located northwest of 168th Street and West Dodge Road. It's over from 10/22/13. A is planning board and planning department recommend approval. Item 13 is a resolution approving the subdivision agreement with Tribeto LLC for the West Dodge Point or with the West Dodge Point Owners Association and Sanitary Improvement District Number 538 for West Dodge Point Lots 1 through 7 and Outlot A and located northwest of 168th Street and West Dodge Road. It's over from 10/22/13.
Public hearings on items number 10 through 13 are today. Proponents, please. Mr. Chauvin.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Chauvin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the developer, just here to answer any questions that you might have regarding these items.
Thank you. Any other proponents today that want to speak? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The documents are approved, six to zero. We'll take items 14 through 17 together. Item 14 is an ordinance for rezoned property located at 18808 West Maple Road from AG Agricultural District to DR Development Reserve District. Item 15 is an ordinance to rezon the same property from AG to R4 Single Family Residential District High Density. A is planning board and planning department recommend approval. Item 16 is a resolution to approve the plat entitled Indian Point located at 18808 West Maple Road. It's over from 10/22/13. A is the planning board and planning department recommend approval. Item 17 is a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement with FRK Development LLC, the Indian Point Homeowners Association and Sanitary Improvement District 559 for Indian Point Lots 1 through 160 and Outlots A through C located at 18808 West Maple Road. It's over from 10/22/13.
Public hearing on items number 14 through 17 are today. Proponents, please.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the Omaha City Council, my name is Jim Lang. I'm an attorney at 11718 Nicholas Street here in Omaha. I represent the applicant, Indian Point LLC. We're here today for final approval of the rezoning and plat, and we request final approval. If you have any questions, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Documents are approved, six to zero. Resolutions rate preliminary plats, plats, subdivision agreements, and special use permit large project. Item 18 is a resolution to approve the preliminary plat entitled Burlington Depot located at 1001 South 10th Street along with attached conditions. It's over from 10/22/13 for publication in public hearing. Had publication. A is planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 18 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name is Dawn Danley. I'm with L.O.A. Daily, 8600 Indian Hills Drive. We are the architect engineering firm, and I'm here on behalf of the owner.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Resolutions adopted, six to zero. We'll take items 19 through 22 together. Number 19 is a resolution, that's the preliminary plat entitled Miracle Hills Replat 4 located at 12110 West Dodge Road with a request for a waiver of Section 5384D of the Omaha Misspo Code for Lot Frontage. It's over from 10/22/13 for publication in public hearing. Had publication. A is planning board and planning department recommend approval. Item 20 is the resolution approving the replat transmitted here with entitled Miracle Hills Replat 4 located at 12110 West Dodge Road. It's over from 10/22/13 for publication in public hearing. Had publication. A is planning board and planning department recommend approval. Item 21 is a resolution approving the subdivision agreement with Menard Incorporated for Miracle Hills Replat 4 Lots 1 through 2 located at 12110 West Dodge Road. And item 22 is a resolution approving the special use permit application submitted by Bricks Plus for a major amendment to a large project special use permit in a CC Community Commercial District located at 12110 West Dodge Road. It's over from 10/22/13 for publication in public hearing. Had publication. A is planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearings on items number 19 through 22 are today. Are there any proponents? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Resolutions are adopted on six to zero vote. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, due to no meeting being held November 12, 2013, agenda item numbers 23 through 24 shall be laid over three weeks to November 26, 2013 for publication and public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, due to no meeting being held November 12, 2013, agenda item number 25 shall be laid over three weeks to November 26, 2013. Special use permit scrap and salvage services. Item 26 is a resolution to approve the special use permit application submitted by Silvino Gomez for a special use permit to allow scrap and salvage services in an HI Heavy Industrial District located at 902 Gray Street. It's over from 10/22/13 for publication and public hearing. Had publication. A is planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 26 is today. Are there any proponents? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted on a six to zero vote. We go to liquor. Items 27 and 28 will go together. Item 27 is the application of Aim Low Inc., DVA Flashback 3015 South 83rd Plaza for a Class C liquor license. It's over from 10/22/13. Item 28 is an application, the same application for catering liquor license.
Public hearings on items number 27 and 28 are today. Proponents, Mr. Kelly.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific. Appearing today with Eric Orban, who is buying the existing business out. And a little bit about him, he is currently a licensee with Corner Pocket on 38th and G. Been there about four years, I think, and had no issues there. He used to also work there and manage this place several years ago, back kind of in its heyday. Currently, it has undergone some difficulties, had some difficulties with the parking lot. He's had it on a temporary operating permit now for about 30 days, and he's encountered some problems. He's not satisfied with the way it's operating right now. But he has now recently done a couple different things. Number one, made a deal with a landlord where he can enforce problems in the parking lot. I don't know if you're familiar with the location, but it's quite a large parking lot at 84th and, at 84th and Center area there, a little bit to the south of 84th and Center. And with that, he's going to have off-duty police patrolling there. He's made a deal with them to do that, which I think will help a lot. He's also, he's also going to change the music venue, which is a lot of what drives a certain type of clientele. And so with that, he's here for any questions you might have. And we're, again, we're not happy with what's going on now. Again, it's, this is a kind of a new phenomenon in the liquor license business over the last several years that you're not having problems inside. It used to be all you had to really worry about was inside the licensed premise. But now society is kind of demanding that you, that you make sure that you don't have any kind of a nuisance surrounding it. And we're trying to do that. And so even though that's not the letter of the law, I think you wouldn't let him be there if it continued to be a nuisance. So, so he is aware of that. He's here for questions. And I'm pretty sure, just having talked to him and the steps he's taking, that he will have, he'll do a good operation. This place was a lot of fun at one time. I think it can be again.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Thompson.
I do, sorry. I do believe that, well, let me ask you first of all. Do you understand what was said in terms of nowadays you have to control what's inside the building and outside?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Give your name for the man. Eric Orban.
Yes.
3015 South 83rd Plaza.
Okay, so you're willing to put how many security guards out into the parking lot?
We have two officers that are willing to come out on Friday and Saturday nights to patrol the lot. I also have, right now, five bouncers on the inside, but two of them are usually on the outside at the door.
Okay, so you'll have three inside and then five outside and, and three, let's see, three out, three inside, three outside, and two of the outside are going to be police, retired policemen or just after, off-duty?
Off-duty.
Policemen, okay. Do you realize that this area has a long history of, for better lack of word, raising hell?
Yes.
Okay, so we need you to go in, and we want to give you a shot because we don't want you to pay the sins of the former people who were there. What we need you to really go on is, go in and set a good, a good tone, good atmosphere.
Okay.
Make sure that you also reach out to the neighborhood. Go knock on doors and introduce yourself. If there is a neighborhood association, join it.
Okay.
Do those kinds of things ahead of time, and then you'll find out that your sledding will be much, much smoother.
Okay.
Okay, I'll move the approval.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Grenant.
Eric, your attorney mentioned you have an establishment in my area, 38th and G Street?
Yes.
Corner Pocket?
Yes.
And it's my understanding that it had its ups and downs prior to your arrival.
Yes.
Is that correct? I haven't heard anything that has been sort of out of bounds since you've taken that over. I'm just curious, why the quantum leap?
I originally started at Flashbacks. I managed it for about four years. At the time, could not afford it when it went up for sale, so I bought Corner Pocket because that's what I could afford. At the time, they were having problems, but in the last four years, we have had zero problems. Now Flashbacks went back up for sale, and I thought I'd move back to where I started.
Wow. Now, that's quite a jump. And my colleague, Mr. Thompson, is right on target on some of the things that you really need to consider.
Mm-hmm.
I think that what you did on a small scale there at 38th and G is obviously successful. Multiplying that probably by 10 or 20 now, you're going to have to do that out at this facility on 83rd. Having that, it used to be part of my district years ago. I know that, that the neighborhood to the east usually raises concern when there's a crisis.
Right.
So keeping that in mind and really working and seriously considering and doing, hopefully that you'll do the suggestions that have been made to your attorney this morning and by my colleague this afternoon, you'll probably be a success there. Wish you the best. If there's no second, I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion and second. Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Resolution to grant is adopted, six to zero. We'll take items 29 and 30 together. Item 29 is the application of Borgata Brewing and Distilling LLC, 1116 Jackson Street for a Class C liquor license. Item number 30 is the same applicant for a catering license.
Public hearings on items number 29 and 30 are today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, council members, my name is Zach Treymott, president of Borgata Brewery and Distillery located 1116 Jackson 68131. And I'm here today to tell you a little bit about what we're doing. We're opening up a brewery and Omaha's first distillery since before prohibition. And in the front piece of that, we're going to have a tasting room where people can come in, try the different things that we're producing, and we'll also have small bites that will be produced by other local independent restaurants that we'll be bringing in. I'm here today to answer any other questions you have about our establishment.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none, any opponents? Public hearing, oh.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Ryan Doherty. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Bradford and Kane in 1620 Dodge Street, Omaha, Nebraska. My office represents Jim and Kathleen Mosher. And Jim and Kathleen Mosher are the owners and occupiers of the residential property that's located directly next to the planned operation for Borgata. They are unable to appear here today. They're out of town, so they've asked me to appear on their behalf and voice some concerns that they have with regard to this location for Borgata being so close to their home. Jim and Kathy have owned this property for about 25 years. They've lived there for 25 years. And during most of that time, the business is on either side. One's been an art gallery, the other one's been an antique store. And so the changed use of the property where Borgata is going into has raised some concerns for them, particularly with the potential for noise and the odor of the brewing and distillery. And what's, what's unique about this situation is the Mosher's home and the building where Borgata is going in have a common wall. And so there is concern by the Mosher's that the noise and vibrations coming from the operations of Borgata will flow into their home and, in effect, disrupt their use of their home as, and lifestyle and potentially affect the value of that property. With this being also planned for brewery and a distillery, there's odors that come with that. And, again, those odors flowing into the Mosher's home. And so the Mosher's are concerned about whether or not there's proper control devices being implemented by Borgata to reduce or eliminate the sounds coming into their home and the odors coming into their home. So they just wanted me to appear today and express those concerns to you as a council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? See none, would you like to respond to some of those questions, please?
Please. And I brought a sheet that lists some talking points for the value that we bring to the old market. May I pass those out?
Sure. Bring them right up here.
I have one picture of a rendering of our basement as well.
We do understand the concerns of the Mosher's who have their residence next door, and so we have taken upon ourselves to try to minimize any effect on their lifestyle. We learned after we took over the building that there was a shared wall between the Mosher's house and our new space that we've leased. So we took it upon our own expense and time to build a completely separate wall, six inch metal stud wall with a space in between their brick. We then added insulation within the metal walls, then put up sheet rock and plywood, and then over that, on the bottom half of the wall, bottom part of the wall, put up brick and then tin metal tiles over that. So we put a substantial wall and airspace separating the two spaces. And as far as odor is concerned, the building next to the Mosher's Art Gallery is another brewery, Upstream Brewing Company. I was the head brewer there for six years, and then I was also the president and founder of Lucky Bucket Brewing Company and the Solus Distillery. And so I do have experience with the odors that breweries and distilleries can produce. And anything that we will produce will be no different than what's happening on the east side of their building at Upstream Brewing Company.
Thank you, Mr. Treymott. Public hearings closed.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Grenant.
I would imagine that we couldn't talk you out of your proprietary formula to help out sometimes with our problems at the wastewater treatment plant, couldn't we?
Probably not today.
Oh, just thought I'd ask. Thank you.
Probably don't want to use that water for what you're doing. Ryan, I forgot your last name.
Doherty.
Doherty, would you like to come up and, were you aware of those things they've done? And does that make you feel, your client feel more at ease about the operation?
You know, I think what would be good is if, because my clients have been out of town for quite some time, so they haven't had an opportunity to personally meet Mr. Treymott and his partners and tour the facility. That would probably help them is to be able to come in and visually see what, what has been done to help eliminate some of those concerns that they've had and, and hopefully get off on the right foot with everybody, so...
Yeah, sounds like a meeting and maybe a little tour would be beneficial.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
There's a motion, or Mr. Gray?[1780.72] There's a motion, or Mr. Gray?
Yeah, let me ask a question. Just very quickly, if, if we, in order for them to feel a little bit more comfortable, would a, would a two-week layover harm you at all, or would you prefer to go ahead at this point?
Well, we would prefer to go ahead. We're hoping to have our CO in the next 10 days or so and begin to operate our business. We are more than happy to show the Mosher's around and show them the detail that we put in. I've taken pictures as well throughout the process, so they could be seen from the inside of the wall. I don't know if that would help at all. I could show you those today.
Sure.
Okay, may I grab my phone there on, they happen to be on my phone?
No, sorry, I just wanted to know if you would, but, and I'll just go ahead and keep my motion the same. I'll just make a motion approve.
Okay, thank you.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Resolution to grant is adopted six to zero. Item 31, Elks BPO, Iroquois Lodge 92, DBA Elks, 2420 Lake Street. Request permission to appoint Ronald L. Jefferson manager of their present Class C liquor license location.
Public hearing on item number 31 is today. Proponents, please.
I am Ronald L. Jefferson, President of United Minority Contractors, President of Jefferson Construction, and also the Exaltor Rule of Elks. I was the bar manager for three years ago, and I stepped down because I wear too many hats. Ben Grady knows, I have a lot of hats. Soon as the scene at the Elks had been closed for two years, and we had to reopen, I came back in and got things straight, got it back to running. We have run into a zero tolerance there. There is no wrap, there is no sagging pants, and no hat. Most of my neighbors would agree with me that we have instituted some policies at the Elks that has been a benefit to communities. There is no activity we do, we pass to the community, we have Halloween party for the kids, we do things for Easter, and we have a zero tolerance. So I'm just out here to see if I can get approved to be a manager again.
Thank you. Sounds like you're president of a lot of things.
Yeah, I wear a lot of hats.
Any other proponents today that want to speak? See none. Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. And for our newer members on the City Council, when you hear somebody in my office yelling at me, it's usually him, so I just wanted you all to, to know that, so that when you hear it...
He must be down by the lot.
He's down by the lot. But the one thing I do want to say, though, in, in support, Ron, is the fact that you did get it back open again. It's an historic building. It needs to, it needs to be preserved, and, and I appreciate the efforts that you've put into it, and I also appreciate the zero tolerance policy that you put in. Motion approved.
Second. Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved, six to zero.
I'd like to thank the City Council for this opportunity to be before you, and I'll be in your office again.
Thanks.
Item 32 is LBC Incorporated, DBA Jericho's Restaurant, 11732 West Dodge Road. Request permission to appoint Frederick W. Kerbus, manager of their present Class C liquor license location.
Public hearing on item number 32 is today. Proponents, please.
Frederick William Kerbus of Jericho's Restaurant, 11732 West Dodge Road.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none. Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Ms. Melton.
I just wanted to make one comment about Jericho's. I, I live down the street, and I just appreciate that you stay in business because you're still one of those old-school steak houses.
Absolutely.
That you can go into, where you get the iceberg lettuce, and you get a good steak.
Best prime rib in Omaha.
Best prime rib in Omaha. I, I would agree with that.
I've been there 17 years, a chef and dinner manager, so we're trying to keep the doors open.
Well, and, and I wish you the best, because I, I do really enjoy going to Jericho's.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And motion to approve.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed therefrom. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda, in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise taken out of order, as otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
Public hearings on agenda items number 33 through 40 were held on October 29. Second. Ms. Melton, do you have your light on? Was that from before?